Of course you did. We all, but did I say it politely that he would?
Okay.
He knows and believes he's a great person.
No.
I tried to make it sound like we're really wrong, but.
Are we ready? We're good? Good evening and welcome to our regular city council meeting for Wednesday, April 20th, 2022. The council chambers are open to the public at 100% capacity. We will start tonight with our invocation to be given by Father Gregory, I'm sorry, Greg Beaumont from the Holy Family Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in stand.
So we up our heads and take a moment recognizing the presence of the divine. Lord, we thank you in this beautiful time of year, the snow on our mountains and all things blooming and blossoming. We thank you for this great city and this great community. We thank you above all for sending forth your son, who as we celebrate on Easter Sunday, has shown us in a world that is torn by division and by violence, by differences and contention, that none of these have the final word, but that from their darkness comes forth light and even from death, life itself, and the glory and the victory of all that is right and good and true. We ask your blessings upon our city and also all those gathered here with positions of leadership and responsibility. This evening, we ask your special blessings also upon all those who volunteer and work for our police and fire departments, for those that we turn to when we're most in need, to help us, to save us, to protect us, to defend us. Lord, we thank you for the gift of everyone in our city and we ask that all the deliberations be guided by your wisdom and by your grace for the benefit and the blessing of all. Through Christ our Lord, we pray.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated. I will call to order our regular session meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please do roll call?
Councilwoman Pollard.
Here.
Councilwoman Selinger.
Here.
Councilwoman Roman.
Here.
Mayor North.
Here.
Thank you. Item number two on our agenda is to approve our agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, and why our chambers are probably full tonight, is the, item 3.1 is what we'll start with. It's the swearing in of our fire department CERT volunteers. Chief, if you want to come on up, would you like me to call their names or?
Hang on just one second.
Okay.
We'll do a brief introduction about CERT in general, what, why we're here and having them being sworn in.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Appreciate your patience with our introductions to you specifically about CERT. CERT, what is CERT? It's the Community Emergency Response Team. There's a lot of commitment that goes into the Community Emergency Response Team. The people that you will swear in tonight are 100% volunteers. They volunteered their time through some difficult times, our last COVID bubble that we went through. They all were in the middle of their training and kept going forward. We started with a total of 18 and tonight you will see the people that are left over from that through those difficulties and all of them went through the process of watching me on Zoom each evening that we couldn't get together, but they stayed strong and they're here in front of you tonight to have that specific, I wouldn't say oath of office, but basically swearing in so that they know that there's something to be had in this CERT volunteer world. Specifically about CERT, again, it's the Community Emergency Response Team. It's about readiness and people helping people, rescue or safety, and doing the greatest good for the greatest number of people in a community. Our goal is to promote a safer community that we live in and it's part of the Federal Emergency Management Agency and has partnered with us, the Kingsburg Fire Department. It was started in 1985 by Los Angeles City Fire Department, believe it or not, and it was basically so that citizens would be able to be self-sufficient on their own during the early stages of a catastrophe. That was spurned a whole other process for them to get involved in the community and then also to help others during those disasters. And in 1994, the Federal Emergency Management Agency expanded CERT materials to make them applicable to all hazards and made the program available to communities nationwide. Now just as a point of perspectives, in our Central Valley area, there are only a few CERT organizations: Fresno City, Clovis City, Sanger City, Bakersfield City, and Kingsburg. That's it. So, we are very lucky to have this number of volunteers. I worked with the CERT folks in the city of Fresno during my tenure there and had a lot of positive things come about from those relationships. People with, that I still see very often and were very instrumental in assisting first responders, both police and fire during major incidences within the city of Fresno and Clovis. So tonight, again, I want to make sure that you realize that there's a lot at stake for these folks coming here. They put a lot of skin in the game and for them to be recognized in front of the public, I think, is a really important thing. And my hat's off to them and hopefully at the end of this, all the community members that are here will understand the sacrifice that these folks have had to undertake to be here. They've actually received 36 hours of training in areas of disaster preparedness, fire safety, medical operations, light search and rescue, CERT organization, disaster psychology, terrorism, stop the bleed, and disaster simulation where they actually had to do a graduation type of test that they actually got to apply, all the skills they learned throughout their five weeks of training. After this, they will also receive another approximately eight hours worth of training in CPR and automatic external defibrillator and as well as smoke detector and carbon monoxide installation that we will undertake, hopefully with a positive grant outcome from the hospital district. One of the things they've also done just within the last few weeks, they've volunteered over 20 hours of community service already for the car show. We had a number of the members there assisting with it, talking about CERT and just safety in general during the car show. So without any further ado, Madam Mayor, if you want to call them up?
Call them up. Okay. Kathleen Lawler, Robert Gonzalez, Linda Sward, Jacob Wiggs, Karen Wright, John Wright, Adele Van Damme, Michelle Lepsovich, Lisa Schwartz, John Palms, Rob Gong, Assistant CERT Coordinator, and Rolanda, Rolinda Hernandez, CERT Coordinator.
All right, and then the city clerk will assist us in swearing you guys in. We're going to hand you your certificates here as we go along with it.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Real quick, the city council members would like to congratulate you all. We'll take pictures of you as well. I'll elaborate a picture real quick. You guys want to jump in there and I'll take a picture?
And you're a good council?
Yep. Okay.
My turn real fast?
Sure. Thank you.
All right. One, two, three.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Congratulations all. And one last thing, if I could, while the CERT members kind of take their seats, I'd like to recognize two folks, Rob and Rolinda. Specifically, Rob and Rolinda, they took on additional training beyond this. If I'm not mistaken, that training to become CERT trainers so that we can have the program was significant. I don't know the total number of hours that you guys had to commit to, but wasn't it? So, so we.
Eighty hours.
So each one of them committed 80 hours just so that they could train the CERT folks to start the program. So this has been a large undertaking, again, volunteering their time to do this, and again, supported by the city so that we can have a much safer community and they will help us in our future efforts to get out and reach the needs of the community. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to mention that our town is known for safety and it's a fundamental need to, like a human need to feel safe. And what your sacrifice of time is doing is providing a better quality of life for us here. So, thank you for that. Onto item 3.2, penning and swearing in of police department employees. Chief Adian, if you want to come on up?
Thank you and good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I have two police volunteers and one new police officer that I'd like to recognize this evening. The first police volunteer I'd like to recognize and ask her to come forward is police volunteer Myra Boland. Myra was raised here in Kingsburg and graduated from Kingsburg High in 2012. She continued to, she continued her education at Reedley Community College where she received her associate's degree in sociology in 2016 and went on to CSU Fresno where she received her bachelor's degree in 2019. After college, Myra began working for the Kingsburg Media Foundation full-time. For four years, she worked with the Kingsburg Media Foundation in their customer relations department and during that time, she helped them build a new nonprofit organization called the Herb Night Community Center. Fast forward to today, and Myra is now the executive director of the Herb Night Community Center. She has worked to offer youth-based programs for the community such as a summer recreation program, after-school program, and a student lunch program where high schoolers can come in and eat for free on Fridays. And she's also invited the police department to drop in on occasion on that program and we've really enjoyed that. Her goals for the Herb Night Community Center are to empower others, help strengthen families, and help build loving relationships. Myra hopes to help the Kingsburg Police Department grow their community by sharing impactful moments of the members' experience. Myra shared, "My family is not able to be present, but it is an honor to be able to now volunteer in the same community that my dad devoted his law enforcement career to for over 30 years. Growing up, I always viewed Kingsburg Police Department as my second family and being raised as a police officer's daughter gave me the opportunity to witness individuals of all backgrounds come together with one common goal, to protect and serve." That has been the biggest, biggest impact on my life. And her dad is a retired police officer and a friend. For many years, he, her dad and I served together at the police academy as, as part of the instructional staff. And so we're, it's, he's, he's out of state, your family's out of state and can't be with you tonight, but, but just know that you have your other family here with you. All right? So Myra is a resident of Fresno now, but her heart is in Kingsburg. She enjoys reading, spending time with her friends, party planning, serving on the production team at church, and volunteering in her community. And we are delighted to have her here. She's going to be helping us with our social media. So thank you very much. Next, I'd like to call up police volunteer Hallie Sambriski. Hallie was born in the small Swedish village of Kingsburg, attended local schools, and graduated, graduated in 2021 from CSU Fresno with her bachelor's degree in multimedia journalism. Hallie aspires to use her voice as an outlet to uplift those in the Asian community and strives to better her community by writing stories and creating content that pertains, pertains to the Central Valley. She formerly worked for the KC24 CBS 47 news stations as a digital content producer and now works as a content media specialist for the marketing and PR firm, is it Prem, Prem PR, and social in Fresno. She loves all things green and adores all animals and pets. Hallie enjoys listening to music, reading sappy romance novels, and reading and writing all about all things beauty and fashion in her spare time. Hallie is joined tonight by her mother Melanie, her dad Tom, her fiance Jared, and I think her mother, future mother-in-law might even be upon the dais. So Hallie is also going to be assisting us and has been assisting us, as has Myra, with our social media presence. And I just can't thank them enough for what they have brought to our social media. It's really helped us to engage with the community. And we're very fortunate to have both of you with us. Thank you. Next, I would like to invite up police officer Josefino Aravalo. Joey, as he's better known, was born in Lancaster, California and raised in Fresno where he attended local schools. After graduating from high school, Joey joined the US Marine Corps where he served for five years. During those five years, he served as a team leader in the Echo Company, Second Battalion, Seventh Marines, and also served as a line staff for the Marine Corps Rifle Range. Once he finished his service in the Marine Corps, he returned to Fresno and began working at the Fresno Rifle and Pistol Club as a firearms instructor. In 2021, Joey attended the police academy in Fresno and graduated in November. At his graduation ceremony, he was sworn in as a police officer for the Kingsburg Police Department. As a new officer, Joey is eager to learn and perform his job within the community. He helps to contribute his many skills to the department. In his spare time, he enjoys weight training, recreational shooting with his friends, spending time with his fiancee Crystal and his daughter Adeline and Nova, and training and exploring with his family. And he's joined here tonight by some of his family, including his fiancee Crystal and his daughters, both of which are here, and I think his daughter Adeline is going to be pinning his badge. Madam Clerk, if you would administer the oath.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Okay, so we're going to have an opportunity for some pictures, but before we do that, we're going to, I'm going to ask Officer Aravalo to step to the center of the well and have his family come up with him and pin his badge. Okay, so we do, you get to put that on. Well, you did a great job. You got it, you got it and pinned both those little holes and that's pretty good. All right, congratulations, Officer Aravalo. This is picture time, guys. I'll tell you, we're going to have to orchestrate this a little bit. Hang in there, guys. If I could get the council members to come around Officer Aravalo.
One, two, three. One more.
All right, go ahead and step to the side and Myra, if you would come forward. And I would like your police department family to come and take pictures with you. All the cops. Even the guys outside. My mom used to say, act like you like each other.
Chief, you want to get in there?
Ah, okay, I'm good. Not around me, not these guys. Take them out of film. All right, and then Hallie, if you'd like to step to the center of the well and we'll ask your family to come up and take some pictures.
One, two, three. One more. All right.
Thank you. You bet. Thank you. Good to see you. And then if I could, Hallie, just stay there. I'll get the council members to come in and then we'll, we'll switch places with Myra and with the council.
I'll get in here first. I beat him. All right. One, two, three. Official record here. All right.
Okay, don't, don't go anywhere. Why don't you two join in? All, all three of you. All right.
One, two, three. Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you would like, but don't feel obligated. We'll give you a second to decide. Our next item is item four, which is public comments. This is the time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker and just a reminder that because it is not on the agenda, the council will not be able to respond due to the Brown Act. Do we have anyone in chambers that, from the public that would like to come up and speak on public comment? Go ahead and come on up, state your name and if you're a resident of Kingsburg. Hi Brenda.
Hi. Brenda Prado and I am a resident of Kingsburg. I know a lot of people say on social media that if you want something done, don't complain about on social media, go to council chambers. So here I am. I wanted to propose an idea of the city of Kingsburg possibly hiring an animal control officer. I don't believe we've had animal control here since the 1980s. The town keeps getting bigger, the animal issues keep getting bigger along with it. I also have some concerns with the contract that Kingsburg currently has with Second Chance Shelter in Selma. There's quite a few issues that have come up recently. I won't bring them up here, but maybe if we can get together a date in the near future, I'd like to speak with whoever I need to speak with regarding issues with animals. Not only dogs, but cats as well. There's been some instances of, I guess you could call it, some animal cruelty that has gone on that I've been made aware of because there is no animal control and because our, the program that the city has for cats as far as TNR hasn't been very successful. And I understand that funding has to come somewhere for both of those things to occur, but I wanted to bring it to the council's attention that we need to do something about this and I would like to be able to have the chance to possibly get this on a future agenda meeting, council meeting, agenda.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in council chambers? Come on up and state your name and if you're a resident of Kingsburg?
Hello, I'm Michelle Lopez from Parlier. I'm the founder of Bambi's Army Rescue and we're located in Parlier and I'm here to let you know that I'm ready to assist and help with TNR. You guys have a lot of feral cats out here and I'm ready to help you. I already have a vet lined up and we just got to trap them and take them in, but we need help with funding. we need help with funding. So, just here to offer help.
Thank you, Michelle. Do we have anyone else? Come on up and state your name, and if you're a resident of Kingsburg?
I'm Esperanza Reyna. I live here in Kingsburg. I'm just here to show support and request that the council please put this on the agenda. Not only am I here to help, but volunteer as well to help with a solution to fix this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Esperanza. Anyone else? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Laura Straight. I live just outside of the city of Kingsburg. My address is Selma, though I consider myself, I consider this to be my hometown because I grew up here. I also want to speak in support of hiring an animal control officer. There was a poll online recently, and the question was, do you feel there is a need for an animal control officer in the city of Kingsburg? There were 462 yes votes, 19 no votes, and four, it doesn't matter to me. So, obviously, there's, there's people that feel that it's necessary. The other thing I wanted to mention was in support of trap neuter release. Three and a half years ago, I responded to a Facebook post asking for assistance with the feral cat colony at Kmart, and there was estimated to be 50 to 100 cats there. Some of them had been there as long as 10 years, I was told. And people in our group have been doing trap neuter release in the past, and it really works. We're down to an estimate about 12 cats over there. So, we feel very strongly about trap neuter release. One thing that we're a little worried about is second chances no longer taking cats, so we're kind of worried that with no trap neuter release going on, that those colonies are going to start growing again. And I can only speak to the Kmart colony, but it could affect, of course, other colonies in town as well. So, I would also like to ask that some funding be made available for trap neuter release. There are volunteers, we are willing to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Do we have anyone else in council chambers that would like to have public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Item five is consent calendar. Wait for it to quiet down a little. These are items considered routine in nature, and they're placed on the consent calendar. They will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. It shows it's on. Can you hear me now? I can talk really loud. I have a teacher's voice. How about that? Each of these items will be voted on as one vote in favor of the consent calendar and considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Approval of the consent calendar. Items include recitals, reading ordinances by titles, and adoptions of recommended actions contained in staff reports. Tonight, we have items 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5. Is there anyone that would like any of these items pulled?
No.
Then I will need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Onto item 6.1, regular calendar. 6.1 is financial statement for the year ending of June 30th, 2021. Consider statements as prepared by Price, Page &amp; Company, staff report prepared by Finance Director Alma Colado, and presentation by Price, Page &amp; Company, managing partner Fausto Penjosa and Osvaldo Gutierrez. Did I say it right?
I wish I was a managing partner.
You just got a promotion.
Thank you very much. Is there anything you want to say, or just want to head into it? All righty. Thank you, everybody, for, can you hear us, for having us again. So, we're Price, Page &amp; Company, we're the external auditors for the city. I'm Osvaldo Orazzi. Met me before, I'm sure. And this is Anthony. He's our audit supervisor for the audit this year. We'll keep it short and sweet, because obviously, there's a lot to do. One thing we are gonna do differently this year is we're not gonna have a PowerPoint, because we don't want to detract from the actual results of the audit itself. So, one thing to just briefly clear it up, here's your financial statements, which is a finely tuned product, and this is the result of the whole, you know, year's worth of work, which is in front of you for you to review, but the actual audit itself is, it's a process. So, that's why I'm gonna help you understand what we do, so you understand our role, and welcome to ask any questions. Very briefly, Price, Page &amp; Company, over 19, over 40-year firm, 1976, one of the top 10 firms in Fresno County. Our specialty is in governments and nonprofits. So, this is what we do. We audit cities, counties, special districts, and whatnot. So, definitely have a lot of experience and variety in our work. Myself, I'm the audit manager. Anthony was audit supervisor. We're both CPAs. Our audit partner, his name is Josh Giosa, not able to attend today, but also one of our leading experts in governmental accounting and other staff members as well. So, what we do is, depending on the audit, we always make sure we have the right team composed to do the job, because if you're not having the right individuals, you can actually get not a good product. So, that's really important for us. The actual process itself, it is a long process. Alma laughs, because it, I don't know how long it takes sometimes, but from the time when we start the engagement letter to when we issue the report, it can be as long as like nine months. So, our tax department laughs, because they can like do a tax return in like one day. For like, I wish we could like start and finish in a day, but that's impossible, yeah. Or it's possible, but you don't want that. For us, we do a lot of planning when it comes to us setting up what we need to do, who we need to talk to, who we want to interview, how we want to tackle reviewing this, because there is a million ways to go about it. And for us, we do share some information with Alma in terms of our plan, but there's information that we do not share, because every year, we do need to still do our due diligence and make sure that we're comfortable giving you our audit opinion. So, that report that you see in the front actually carries a lot of weight. We're putting our signature on it as well. So, there's that. We spend a lot of time making sure we understand any new types of operations within the city in terms of internal controls, staffing, the new environment, right? COVID hit everybody. It's always a big topic. But with that, it's, it's what we do. So, we incorporate that into our procedures for what we need to do when we do our job. Internal controls are always really important, but also importantly is us making sure we develop our audit procedures for testing the account balances, which Anthony's gonna go over. So, it's not as simple, just, yeah, check the box, it's done. I wish it was, but it's not. So, there's that. And then, the next section, Anthony's gonna go over a little bit regarding the audit areas of emphasis.
Thanks, Orazzi. Good evening, council. As Orazzi introduced, my name is Anthony Gonzalez. I was the supervisor this year on the audit. Just really quickly, I'm gonna talk about some of the areas that we focused on during our audit. So, auditors are always interested in cash, so we took a look at cash and investments. We actually confirmed cash balances with the financial institutions this year. We took a look at the city's capital assets to ensure things like police vehicles are being charged to the correct function, always looking at revenues and receivables, so government allocations, sales tax, utility revenues, things like that. We performed different analyses on these revenues. This year, because we didn't have a single audit, and so a compliance audit of your federal funding, we did take a look at some of the state grants and the related compliance, as well as the related revenue recognition. In addition, we looked at your expenses, of course, including salaries, healthcare, accounts payable, and another area of focus this year was the net pension liability. And so, that is the estimate that the city expects to pay related to retirement benefits. Okay? So, those are some of our areas of emphasis. This isn't all encompassing. You know, we do look at a lot outside of this, but these are some of the big ticket items. Okay? Now, I want to move to the independent auditors' report, which I believe you guys have the financial statements in front of you. If you go to page one of that financial report, you will see our independent auditors' report. It's probably about 20 pages down or so.
Page 20 or page 30, yeah.
Go back a page. There you go, right there. So, this is our independent auditors' report, and this basically lays out management's responsibilities versus our responsibilities. And it also, of course, has our audit opinion. So, management's responsibility is the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements, as well as the internal control framework around that. Our responsibility is to come in and provide an audit opinion based on an audit performed in accordance with applicable standards. If you go ahead and scroll down to the bottom paragraph there, you can see opinion. I'm pleased to report that the city did receive what we call an unmodified opinion. This is a clean opinion. Also, you know, the, it's the best opinion you can receive. So, pleased to report that. And this basically means that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, that your significant accounting policies are consistently applied, the estimates included within the financial statements are reasonable, and your disclosures are properly reflected. Okay? So, that's it for this. I do want to give thanks to Alma and her team. You know, as Orazzi was saying, an audit is certainly no small undertaking. So, to receive a clean opinion is certainly something worth celebrating. Orazzi?
Thank you, Anthony. Regarding the, what's called the gas reports, the Government Auditing Standards Report, you should also have a copy of that, but I'm gonna briefly go over it. So, what we do is, on top of the normal audit of the financial balances, we also provide a compliance report over internal controls and compliance, actually. So, for that, we always want to make sure that we address everything that goes along with the audit, and if there is any issues, that we speak up and show you the issues, because it's better for us to say something than not at all. There have been cases where other firms may have taken a shortcut and just, eh, nothing's ever gonna happen, but then stuff happens, and that's what you see in the news. So, for us, we're not attesting to 100% accuracy of, we looked at every single dollar throughout the whole year that was spent. That would be impossible. But we do have our procedures and methodologies to make sure we do our due diligence to see if there's anything major that we want to bring to your attention. So, in terms of that, we do have a few findings. So, there are two material weaknesses and one significant deficiency. The material weakness regarding financial close and reporting. In summary, that's one of the repeat findings that has happened. A lot of that has to deal with the timing of getting the whole audit ready to go, and more importantly, the actual available resources the city has to hire staff. So, some of, as an example, a larger city, they may have five CPAs and 20 accounting staff. Here, you have a smaller department, which your core purpose is to run, you know, the finances for the city. That's like number one. And then, on top of that, prepare information for us to audit at the standard that's one of the highest standards. So, there's normal accounting, then there's other, you know, requirements, and then there's governmental standards. So, that's the level of detail that we have to review it at. So, in a way, it's kind of expected, because this is actually happening across multiple cities. You're in the same situation, so it's the same, you know, if you had unlimited resources, of course, you can hire a full team. But either way, we're bringing that to your attention because it is still an issue. But however, at the end of that report, there's management's corrective action plan. So, you can see what the plan is for them to actually resolve this. And most importantly for us is, what we care about the most is, it's one thing to identify if there's an issue, but it's more important for us to identify, ensure that there is action being taken. So, if it's one thing to just say, hey, there's an issue, just sweep it under the rug, that's not what we see is happening here. So, that's actually very good. The other weakness, material weakness is regarding capital assets and the treatment of that. So, whether it's an issue with how things were depreciated, the schedules being manual versus using a system, right? So, I'm not gonna go over it in too much detail, other than just acknowledging that the people that need to know about it the most, there's the people right here that we've talked to already. So, of course, Alex and Alma always want to fight us, but it is our, rightly so, believe it or not. That's good, because they take pride in this, which is good. We still give you a clean opinion, but it doesn't mean there's always room for improvement. If you had no findings, then that's actually sometimes an eye catcher for us. Why are there no findings? So, when you see a lot of these clean, clean reports, you're wondering what's actually happening, because there's always, in any organization, something happening, right? And then, the bank reconciliations is a significant deficiency, so it's smaller in scope than these other findings, but bottom line is the timeliness of getting it really dialed in, you know, within 30 days after the end of the month to perfection. So, still something to work on as a city. You can read the findings in the report, and the corrective action plan is after the report. Regarding internal controls over compliance, that we didn't find any issues, which is good. So, like Anthony mentioned, there's times where we need to look at, actually it's required, that we look at compliance as well. So, not just the actual validity of the numbers, but whether or not there was any major laws or regulations that could affect the numbers, as in like grant reporting, or, you know, making sure that you're keeping all the right reports and whatnot. So, while we do our own analysis, we didn't see anything that we want to report to you. So, Anthony's gonna finish off, and then we'll be here to answer any questions that you have.
All right, so, to conclude our presentation, I just want to cover what we call required communications. So, as part of our audit, we issued a audit communication letter, and that basically describes some of the key aspects of our audit, and these are required to be communicated. So, even though it's already in that letter, just wanted to communicate it here. So, to start, significant accounting policies, there were no changes to that. The two significant estimates included in these financial statements are related to the allowance for doubtful accounts. So, this is what, you know, when you bill somebody for water, what you expect to not get paid for, essentially. And then, also, the net pension liability. Talked about that earlier. It's about, it's what the city expects to have to pay out for retirement benefits. A lot of different estimates go into this calculation. Sensitive disclosures, note two to the financial statement includes information about deficit fund balances. So, these are city funds with liabilities exceeding the assets. So, just wanted to point that out. We did not encounter any significant, significant difficulties in performing our audit. In terms of significant audit adjustments, I'm not gonna go over those in great detail here, but attached to that letter, you will find all of our audit adjustments. We did not have any significant disagreements with management, and we are not aware of any fraud or illegal acts. So, with that, that's all I have, and like Orazzi said, we're more than happy to answer questions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council discussion? Any council discussion?
Great. All good news. Thank you.
I just had one question about your areas of focus specifically.
Sure.
How do you determine what those are? Is that something you determine, or when we consult with you guys initially, are we saying focus on these things, and then that rotates every year? How is that determined?
So, what we do is, we come in, and as Orazzi was kind of explaining, we, we gain an understanding of the operations, and based on that understanding, we determine where the risk is. And so, one of the things that we do.
You make that determination.
We do.
Okay.
Okay. And then, we do, obviously, ask management if there's anything that, you know, you think we should focus on, but yeah.
That's key, because obviously, they work here every day. We don't know everything that's happening here, so that's why we actually are open about that. If there's any concerns that they wanted to bring to our attention, they can. Actually, you can bring attention, something to our attention as well. So, it's important to have that open dialogue as well, because, yeah, of course, we, we have a lot of experience, but again, we're just not here every day, so we don't know every single thing that's happening. But we do our best to do our due diligence to make sure we cover everything that's necessary. So, a lot of that audit planning time is that, us analyzing what happened the past few years of the city, looking at the minutes, understanding what's going on internally. Has there been turnover with this and that? And then, we delve into all the new standards that are coming out for accounting and auditing, and then a combination of all that says we need to focus on this, 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 this. So, it's kind of like a process. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other council discussion?
I just have a question. When you do the profile of the city, is that required, or is that just something that your company does?
No, that's a requirement. So, for us, it's called understanding the entity. We need to truly understand, to the best of our ability, what's going on, because if we didn't, all we know is that there's numbers that we need to audit blind. So, say as an example, we didn't fully have a better grasp on your utilities, and we thought, oh, that looks reasonable, but if we knew that, oh, there's something like a rate change, and there's changes of personnel, things that could have impacted it, then that actually helps us do a better job to make sure that number's correct. And if it's not, then we'll work with the city to do journal entries or adjustments to fix the number, but more importantly, see what the issue is in case there needs to be a core change in terms of operational, like calculations of the numbers and stuff like that. in terms of operational, like calculations of the numbers and stuff like that. So it's actually one of the more important things that we do.
Yeah, I just meant like, when you profile Kingsbury, you go back, you know, to the very beginning, you know, of, in the 1700s.
Oh, no!
Talking about in the beginning of that action.
You know, that's what I'm talking about. You know?
I see.
Located in the San Joaquin Valley, you know, the Europeans came here in 1773. I'm saying, is that a requirement, or is that just something your company does?
No. So this is what's called an annual comprehensive financial report. So when, that means it's a more comprehensive version of just sending you the normal financial statements. So that's the introductory section. There's a transmittal letter. There's other information that goes with the report, but it's not audited, if that's what you're asking. We take that into consideration to make sure there's nothing that's like really, really way off base. Yeah.
I like it, it's interesting to read it, but yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I don't know how old, or how that information's been updated every year, but yeah, I think it's been carried forward for a long time.
Yeah, for a few years, yeah.
Yeah. But it's very, yeah, that happens. That's actually good, because it gives you the, yeah, the foundation for the city, yeah.
Any other council discussion? Just thanks to staff and congratulations on a nice, clean audit. And I know it's a lot of work to get everything put together and working with everybody, and thank you for your time as well.
Thank you very much.
It was great to be here.
Yeah.
Thank you. So this is an action item. We will need a motion if we choose to accept the financial statements for year ending June 30th, 2021. I'll make that motion.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Right, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Onto item 6.2. Solid Waste Rate Study and Prop 218 Update. Sponsored by Public Works. And presentation by, can you help me out with how to pronounce this?
Love what you're saying.
Thank you.
I'm glad you asked, because I asked earlier, and it wasn't working for me. So good evening, Mayor North and council members. City staff and Allison are here today with LNT. We're providing a Prop 218 Solid Waste Study Presentation, which encompasses disposal and street sweeping. LNT has provided three proposed options based on input from the March 22 Finance Committee meeting. The presented rates are based on proposed fees by Mid Valley, encompassing the increased cost due to SB 1383 and other factors such as the consumer pricing increase passed on by Mid Valley Disposal annually, operating and maintenance costs, procurement cost, and reversing the current operating deficit. The proposed street sweeping rates take into consideration common areas or newly improved areas that are not currently being swept, as well as the disposal of the street sweeping refuse. The disposal and street sweeping rates that make up the solid waste enterprise fund need to be self-supported by the rates. It is important to note that the rates for solid waste have not increased in 13 years, with the last increase taking place in 2009. If the Prop 218 increase is approved, the new rates would become effective September 1st, 2022, and subsequent increases would take place July 1st of 23, 2023, 24, 25, and 26. Just, it is important to note that we aren't voting on an increase tonight. So it's just information and direction from you guys. So there are three rates. I will have Allison come and present the rates and have a discussion, and then staff will come back with their recommendation and allow you guys to ask some questions.
So tonight, we'll go over kind of the background of the solid waste fund, a little bit about Proposition 218 procedural and substantive requirements. Excellent. And the rates in this presentation are slightly updated from the March 22 Finance Committee meeting. And that's because we've received new cost information from Mid Valley. So as we heard, the solid waste rates have not been updated since 2009. Think of all the costs that have gone up since then. But solid waste rates have stayed the same all that time. Your provider is Mid Valley Disposal. They've been your provider since 2014, and they do increase the rates annually. So again, even though rates, the city build rates have not increased since 2009, the Mid Valley underlying costs have gone up each year. As Daniel mentioned, the solid waste fund is an enterprise fund, which means it should be its own business unit and solely supported by rates and charges. It shouldn't be sort of subsidized by other city funds. And we are proposing a five-year plan for rates. Proposition 218, which is the overlaying legislation of how utility rates can be set, allows you to do a five-year plan all at once. So you don't have to do another big public outreach process every single year for each of the next five years. So we're proposing the first rate change go into effect September 1st, and then followed by July 1st of the next four years to coincide with the fiscal year. So as I mentioned, Proposition 218 is the regulation that governs how utility rates can be set. Rates have to be based on the reasonable cost of service. And so that's really the point of the rate study, establish what that cost is and how to collect it from customers fairly. Tonight, we have some rate options. Will, you'll give me feedback on which option you'd prefer. I'll write that into a report, the rate study. And then the city will mail a notice of a public hearing to the ratepayers. Minimum of 45 days later, you'll have a public hearing, which you can consider the rate study and the increase. And the public has the opportunity to protest the rates. And if more than 50% of your service area, your customer base protests, then you cannot adopt the rates. So it's, Prop 218 is a little funny, where it's a protest ballot. So you don't vote, yes, I want to increase, or no, I don't. You just come if you want to vote no. So currently, most residential customers pay $25.10 for refuse monthly, as well as $2.50 for recycling. So the total monthly charge for most residential customers is $27.60. This chart shows a bill survey of other local communities. Many of these others are also Mid Valley customers, so fairly comparable. Everybody across the state, though, is doing rate studies right now because of new regulations, the SB 1383, organics waste recycling. So you can see the date on here is July of last year, and I expect a lot of these agencies are also doing rate studies and increasing the rates. So as we finalize the report, I'll do a refresh of this chart, just to make sure we have the most current data. But for now, Kingsburg's rate is in the middle of comparable agencies. There's a lot of numbers on this chart. It's just to give some background, in addition to residential customers, you have commercial customers. And they pay for refuse based on the size of their receptacle, and then the number of pickups they have per year. Same story for recycling. And then you also offer commercial, the option for organics waste removal. And Mid Valley is adding new characters, new characters, new rate categories under organics to comply with new regulations. So why rate increases are needed? To keep up with Mid Valley's cost increases. Again, you know, you haven't raised your rates since 2009, but costs have increased during that time. In addition to Mid Valley rates, there are city administrative and overhead expenses. So think of just the cost to print and mail bills to customers. And then for street sweeping, as Daniel mentioned, there are new areas that are being swept. And there are changes in how the refuse, so the material that's swept up can be disposed of. And we want to reverse that operating deficit. Your auditor's just told you the solid waste fund is not doing so great, not keeping up with costs. It's costing you more to provide solid waste service than you're bringing in in revenue. So we want to do a course correction and get the fund back on a solid footing. And the three different options that we present discuss an operating reserve. We're recommending a reserve of about 15%. And the idea is that that would be funding if there's an emergency, unexpected costs, or even if costs increase more than we've projected, you have a little bit more of a financial cushion. And then, as I've alluded to, we want to comply with Senate Bill 1383, which requires new organic services to residents and businesses, with overall goal of reducing organic waste in the state. And along those lines, the city is also required to engage in composting and biofuels procurement. So some added costs there as well. So this chart just shows kind of the performance of the solid waste fund over the past five years, comparing revenues to expenses. Net revenues are always negative, so the fund is operating at a deficit and not covering costs. So this chart compares Mid Valley's underlying cost. So the cost that Mid Valley charges the city for each type of service versus what the city then bills to customers. So Mid Valley, with the SB 1383 cost, plus an estimated 8% inflation, is costing the city almost $30 per month for single-family resident. But your current rate schedule is only actually collecting $27.60. So you're losing $2 a month, over $2 a month per each residential customer. And then it's a similar story for commercial customers. The amount that Mid Valley is charging you versus what you collect from the customers is negative. And you can see some of these commercial categories, the dollar amount per month is pretty significant. These are the most common commercial categories, the most commonly used services. So tonight, I have three potential rate options. Option one is the lowest cost. We're calling it break-even option. The first major goal is to cover service provider costs. So align your rates with Mid Valley's rates. There are increases for all customer categories. Unfortunately, commercial customers have fallen further behind the cost of service, so there are bigger percent increases needed for them to cover costs, and then smaller increases for residential customers. So on top of Mid Valley's expenses, there's also an adder for city administration and overhead. And then in years two through five, we're projecting inflationary cost increases. So this first year, we're doing a big step up in cost to align with Mid Valley, so to course correct. And then years two through five, it'll be a pass-through provision. So whatever inflationary increase Mid Valley gives to you, you can just pass that on to customers. So the three options I have tonight, we're estimating inflation at 5.5%. If it's higher, you can pass on that higher cost to customers. If it's lower, it would be a lower cost to customers. We want to align that with your actual underlying cost. Okay? And so option one, like I said, is the lowest-cost break-even option. And the idea is you're not really building up a reserve. You're having just a minimal slight net positive revenue each year. And then option two, we are building the reserve. We're calling it a reserve, but it's really contingency. It's emergency expenses. It's a financial cushion of about $500,000 by the end of the five-year period. And then option three is kind of the deluxe model, the highest-cost model that we developed. Option three pays back that negative fund balance. So prior years, when the solid waste fund has had to borrow from other funds to cover its costs, this option has the fund paying that back. We did coordinate, I believe with the auditors, who said it's not required. Payback is not required. So it's more of a policy decision if the city wants to pay back that prior deficit spending. And so it's paying back about $400,000 in costs, but then also building up that reserve of about $500,000. Okay. So this chart, we'll spend a little time explaining how the fund balances are working over the three options. So this is the solid waste fund ending fund balance. So each year, you know, revenues minus expenses, how much is left over. So options one and two, so the blue and the orange line are starting at zero. So that's assuming they start with a clean slate. They don't have to pay back prior deficit spending. The blue option builds a very slight fund balance over time, but trying to break even as much as possible with those lower rate increases. Option two, the orange line, also starts at zero, so no payback of prior deficit spending. But it is building up to that $500,000 reserve over the five years. And then the gray line is starting at a negative, indicating it does owe money to those other funds, and it's paying that off over time, and then ends with the recommended reserve. So it's a low-cost, medium-cost, and high-cost option. And this chart illustrates, for each of the three options, the impacts to the typical single-family residential customer. So I kind of talked about the rate strategy, where there's one big initial increase to meet the cost of service, course correct. And then the years two through five increases are inflationary. And this chart is illustrative, estimated at 5.5% inflation. So as I mentioned, inflation might be higher, might be lower. This is an example, those outer years, of what the rates might look like. So we're going from $27.60 per month to about $35, $36, or all the way up to 40 for the most expensive option. So it's a similar story for commercial customers. Again, we don't have to go over every single number, but I wanted to illustrate that there are some pretty significant increases for these commercial customers. You know, definitely double-digit increases, not quite doubling, but, you know, very significant dollar amounts each month in the increase. So we'll wrap up with street sweeping. The current rate for street sweeping is $2.10 per home per month, or 20 cents per linear foot of street frontage for commercial. So in this coming fiscal year, we expect the cost for street sweeping to be about $200,000. There is the new cost for refuse disposal. And then, street sweeping also should pay its fair share of city administration and overhead. And so the total expense is estimated about $280,000, and you only collect $140,000. So costs are almost double current revenues. So it's the same story with street sweeping. We did the three options, and the difference is how much of that reserve would street sweeping contribute to? And is street sweeping responsible for prior payback of that deficit spending under option three? So you can see, under option one, the rate is almost doubling, you know, 210 to 407 per month. And then the other options are higher, reflecting build-up or reserve or payback of the prior deficit. So just to wrap up with the schedule. So on March 16th, I gave a, you know, brief introductory presentation of the rate study process. March 22nd, we spoke with the finance committee. We're here tonight, explaining different rate structure options. May, we'll present the final report to city council. June, we recommend mailing the Proposition 218 public hearing notices, explaining what the rate increase is, their rights as ratepayers to protest, and then the hearing procedures. And then holding the Proposition 218 hearing in August. And then September, implementing the new rates. And so I put the hearing as the first August meeting, but if there's an issue with the timing, you have the buffer of a late August meeting as well, in case there's any issues with getting the 218 notice out, or you need more time. And so I believe Daniel has some closing comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Allison. So staff is, does have a recommendation. Staff is recommending council direct the consultant to proceed with option two, to build reserve of the proposed Prop 218 rates. For the Prop 218 process, the council can choose, as policy alternative, the council can choose a different option or request modification to the rates or reject the proposed rates. So city staff is recommending option two, where there is initial jump in cost for the residential customers in the first year, and the smaller inconsistent increases in years two through five. The proposed increases between option one and two are similar, and building a reserve would allow the solid waste fund to prepare for unknown cost in procurement, reporting, education, implementation, operations, and maintenance. Staff acknowledges the increased cost in commercial rates due to SB 1383 and mandatory recycling of organics. Option two could provide a mechanism for the city to assist in the implementation of the mandatory organics recycling by providing some funding to retrofit commercial enclosures. of the mandatory organics recycling by providing some funding to retrofit commercial enclosures or build new enclosures to accommodate sheer bins and expanded pickups. So at this time, we are happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Council discussion. Alex, can you just refresh my memory on the Central Valley sweeping? For the last time we went out, renewed our contract with them, number one. And the last time, so was that part of the bid process or did we just renew with them?
We renewed with them because they gave us a five year rate lock. And so we brought it to the council at that time as to whether or not they wanted to go out for RFP for those services or just continue with Central Valley.
That was last year, correct?
Yeah, I think it was last year, twenty twenty-one, yeah. So one of the bigger changes there is that we used to dispose of those street sweepings at our former dump site and that's no longer allowed. And so you have, from an environmental standpoint, so there are, we have to essentially pay to payment valley to take those, take those dumpings, yeah.
So we're locked in at that rate for five years. So in five years would be the next time we'd have that opportunity then to take a look at it again.
For the street sweeping, yeah.
I have a couple of questions. On slide thirteen, I don't know, Abby, if you can go to slide thirteen. Yeah, it says solid waste fund ending balance. I know the finance committee, we had asked for a combination of two options, like a fourth option. I don't have the paperwork to compare to it, but is that in here?
I think part of the issue was that since the March twenty-second meeting, we got updated costs from Mid Valley as well. We didn't, the March twenty-second meeting, we didn't include the eight percent rate increase from Mid Valley. So I think it would be a little difficult to compare apples and apple, you know, apples to apples from the March twenty-second meeting.
I do remember in that, the one variable that we were definitely going to have was we didn't have the inflation costs yet. And I knew that that was going to have to be changed, so I don't, even if we had it, I don't think that we could compare it.
We had talked about at that meeting about having, like when you're looking at the orange and the blue line of having the break even one maybe move up a little steadier. Okay, so maybe it was the gray and the orange.
Yeah, so one of the things that we didn't, weren't for certain, number one, was whether we had to repay or not. Yeah, so we did get clarification from the auditors and said we don't have to pay that back. So that's why we made that option three. We still wanted to have that option for you guys if that's how you wanted to proceed. And then the other direction that we got was we wanted to have an initial jump and then a more steady increase between years two through five. So that's what option one and two do. They have an initial jump and then the increases are a lot smaller as the years go along.
So when you're looking at thirteen, option two says loan repayment. And when you're looking at option fourteen, or on four, fourteen, it says build reserve. So it's build reserve, it's not loan repayment?
I should have retyped that, I apologize.
So thirteen is incorrect?
Thirteen, okay. On thirteen, it should be build reserve. That was a holdover from a prior draft, I apologize.
Thank you. Any council discussion?
It's not fun, but I mean, nothing we can, I will say in finance, we spent a lot of time going through this because it's increasing rates is something we take very seriously. We're just at a point where we can't not increase rates. And I think that's going to be important if people are listening to this to understand that that was what we wanted. We wanted to keep the rates the same. It's just not financially feasible anymore. It's costing the city just too much money. And as much as we would like to control it at the city level, you know, these state bills are killing us. And this is a byproduct of what's happening in Sacramento. And we're doing what we can to mitigate it, but ultimately, we can't control what they're forcing upon us. And I just want people to understand that we're fighting for that, we're going to continue to fight for that. But a lot of this rate increase is going to be out of our control because of the new mandates that are coming down.
And along that same line, we, just like we did with the ambulance fund, we had not had a rate increase. And our last rate increase, and I believe it was a tiny rate increase, was in two thousand nine. And I mean, we know the cost of everything has gone up. And I think we're going to have to really do a lot of public education because it's concerning that fifty percent could protest it, but we're already in the hole every month in what we're doing. So it is necessary, but I think that education piece is really going to be an important component.
Yeah, so definitely, especially with tier one or tier two generators, which are your large grocery stores, your large, you know, your restaurants. One of the pieces that we hope to achieve through this is getting them to reduce their garbage and reduce and making sure that things are getting thrown away in the right container, which will help them kind of spread out their pickups. So if they're getting picked up in garbage right now two or three times, yes, they're going to get an increase, but they wouldn't get a substantial increase if they continue to throw that much garbage away because things would be going in the recycling bin and the organics bin and in the refuge bin. So like I said, I think that's why the education piece is important. Also being able to get, you know, some assistance further on down the line. If there's, we're having issues with certain industries with implementation or anything like that, then we can use some of that reserve funds to kind of go out and provide additional outreach.
Any other council discussion, questions?
I put this on the radar for the chamber also, to pass along to businesses so they can kind of engage early. And, you know, we'll continue to push that out through the chamber also. Just because this is going to hit businesses pretty, these are pretty significant jumps for businesses. And I want them to be able to forecast that when they're doing their financial plans and stuff. And, you know, whether they can work together to maybe reduce waste, reduce the amount of times it gets picked up or whatever, just as an educational component for them.
Because every single dollar matters right now. I mean, we're all hurting when you're painting at the pump and groceries because everything's getting passed on down to us as the consumer. And so for every single dollar, we've got a lot of people on fixed incomes, you know, seniors especially, that, you know, every penny they count. So I just want to make sure, obviously, you know, this is something we're going to need to do, that whatever direction we do go into, that they understand why we're doing, we don't take this lightly. This is something that's going to be really important. So I know, you know, if you look at all our bills have gone up since two thousand and nine, absolutely all our households have. And, you know, we've been eating the cost for quite a while now. And so at some point, it's going to break. And so here, the dam broke, so.
There will be a senior rate that will be offered, correct?
Okay, that's good, Daniel.
I only put the, kind of the most commonly used categories in here just for a summary abbreviation, but in the final.
It's important, at the final, okay.
And the notice that will be mailed to customers will include every single rate category available.
Any other council discussion?
No, I would say unfortunately, yeah, you know, we do need a rate increase. We can't keep doing this, you know, not having an increase since two thousand and nine. And unfortunately, I was going to say that, you know, we make the increase and homeowners will probably understand, but then like there's going to be renters, you know, the landlords are going to have to increase probably their rents. And it's, you know, it's going to trickle to them too, so. I'm just not sure which one we should approve.
Well, and tonight, the motion that we have is not to approve an increase. It's just to give direction towards like exploring more on option two and moving forward in the process with that one. And we'll have to have the public hearing, the protest, sounds strange to say that, before any rate is decided, correct? Any rate increase is decided.
Well, if you guys have direction this evening on which one of these three, then we'll take that direction. And then yes, there are next steps, certainly, there are next steps that we have to go through. So you guys don't get to decide the rate and then have it happen.
Pop eighteen, I mean, pop two eighteen.
Yeah, we have to go through that process. But if you're comfortable, so as Daniel mentioned, we're recommending option two. But if there's a different direction from the council that you have this evening, then we'll certainly take that and go from there. And I did want to say too, that, you know, as far as thirteen eighty-three is concerned, you know, the state is not going to find Mid Valley if they're not in compliance. They won't find the individual businesses and they won't find individual homeowners, they will find the city. So it's never fun to raise rates, but sort of like we dealt with with the drought, if there was going to be fines coming from the state, it was going to be levied upon us to find those funds. So from one way or another, right, we have to, we're going to have to comply. So just wanted you guys to be aware of that too.
So we basically have three options tonight, right? I want to speak to my opinion on the three options if we're still in council discussion. I really like option one and I wish we could do it because that's the least amount. But going through the numbers and knowing, like city manager said, these fines are, they're going to come.
They're significant fines.
I believe it's ten thousand dollars a truck. And that's going to come out of this budget. So it says build reserve, but I think realistically, that's just forecasting additional costs. I don't even like the word reserve in there because it's going to be spent on this. There's no debating that. I'd be okay with not repaying back what we've already borrowed against. But I think the option one of break even, it's really not sustainable because we're going to have so many additional costs associated with this. With obviously like inflation will be adjusted, but I think we just have to forecast a little bit of that to where it's not, it's not a reserve, it's really just waiting to pay for something else in the future because this is going to get more expensive. So that would be my vote for option two. I think it makes the most sense, the cheapest that makes the most sense.
You're looking at less than a dollar between the two as well.
Yeah, it's not that much more.
Each, each time?
Each, yeah.
So in comparison, when you look at the option three and the jump there.
It's a big jump.
So I have a question. So if the residents are putting food in trash in the truck dumps, they're not going to be checking residents' trashes, they're going to find the city for the truck? Is that what I heard?
So the fines going to come to the city if there's contamination in a truck. Mid Valley is retrofitting and putting cameras in their hopper. So when the trash is going in, it's geo tagging where the pickup's happening and what's coming into the can. So we do have a mechanism in the ordinance that you guys passed to find the residents. But if that happens, you know, twenty times in that route, then that truck becomes contaminated. And when it goes to the landfill, then there's a potential for a fine there. So there is a mechanism for us to pass on some costs, but it may not cover the entire, we're not going to find a resident ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, so part of the rate increase that Mid Valley is passing on is their compliance with the law too. So they have to upgrade their equipment, they have to bring on staff that are going to do those compliance checks. There is going to be an educational and outreach component for residential and for commercial that we will assist with. But that's part of the, they know, they know that they're the provider, right? So we're going to look to them to, you know, really assist with that because we don't, I mean, otherwise we would have to hire a bunch of people to assist with that, right? So that's part of those costs that Mid Valley is saying, you know, that's outside of all the other costs of doing business that have increased in California, right? That's the big one is thirteen eighty-three and they're the, they're who we're, you know, relying on to really make sure that we're compliant.
Hopefully if residents don't comply, you know, they get a little fine and more than once they'll say, oh hey, I better start putting my food in the green waste.
So before us, we have our staff recommendation, did we have more discussion? We have the staff recommendation to proceed with option two through this process. What are our feelings on option two?
I support two.
I support two?
I support two only because of fines we may be getting, other than that, I like one also.
Then I will need a motion for that?
I will make that motion.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Onto item six point three, crime statistics report for the month of March twenty twenty-two and general police department update. Crime statistics report prepared by Kingsburg Police Department Records Supervisor Karina Padilla. And presentation is by Police Chief Neil Didion.
Good evening again, Mayor North and members of the council. You know, before I kind of roll with my normal report, I would just like to say thank you for allowing us to come before council when we do with new employees and volunteers. I think it's really important to recognize our people. I know the council feels that way, but I just want to tell you thank you because it's nice. Not done everywhere, by the way, but it's very nice that we do that. And the council indulges the department heads when we do it and we very much appreciate it, so thank you.
It's our favorite part.
It is our favorite part.
We love it.
We can get council chambers full that way.
Yes, man, that's always nice too. It's kind of crickets in here now, huh?
See, they're all at home watching right now though, chief.
Support, oh yeah, I forgot about that, yeah. Well, thank you. Okay, so we are pretty much hitting our licks. I don't have a lot for you this month. Our training plan continues on as it should. We're actually kind of, you know, getting busy with training. Sent a lot of officers to training on a variety of things because, you know, again, COVID seems to be dissipating for the most part and training opportunities are becoming more available. So we're taking advantage of that at a rapid pace, as fast as we possibly can. I want to mention just a couple of things on the numbers. I would like to invite your attention to, or part one crimes where it says it increased by six, which is true. So we had, you know, seven last month and thirteen this month. And I was kind of curious, why is that, what was occurring? The month of January, I know I could attribute the, at least half of those or a little bit more to catalytic converter thefts. And so the spike this time was again, a couple of catalytic converter thefts, but thefts from vehicles, from inside the vehicle, unlocked vehicles and just other auto parts off of vehicles. So that kind of accounted for the majority of what you're seeing there for that thirteen number. Also down the motorcycle hour sees, we didn't have this stat in time when it was published, but if you're looking at the just a blur of number sheet, it says zero, but that number is actually ninety. And that's kind of it for the statistics. Unless you have a question, I do have some other information that I do want to share, but I want to kind of get through this part first. If you have any questions, happy to field those right now. Okay, then I've mentioned the last couple of months, I wanted to bring you a ten year snapshot. So I'm going to pass out a PowerPoint and then Abby's going to pull it up for you.
Been wanting to do this for a long time.
Well, you know, heck, so we've been all been messing up against him today.
Thank you.
He's been wanting to do this for a long time, the ten year.
Yep. I think since the beginning, when you started doing, when you started doing these stats.
Thanks, Abby. Okay. So, you know, I'm kind of curious about where we're at, what we're doing and, you know, are we hitting our licks? And, you know, where are we at crime wise and how do we compare? So the first one is our UCRs. This is the Uniform Crime Report. This is what we report to the state of California, who in turn reports it to the FBI for us. So I'm just going to kind of walk you through this real briefly. The top line, the green line is listed as larceny in California, we call that grand. line, uh, is listed as larceny, in California, we call that grand theft, that's right now, anything over the uh, amount of nine hundred and fifty dollars is reported. Petty theft, or anything less than nine fifty is not reported, so that's that number and, and an explanation for that. Um, the, kind of the third one in the, kind of the line in the middle, and I think it's blue, is um, listed as motor vehicle theft, so that is, you know, has its own category, and then below that, the orange line is aggravated assault, is what it's called across the country, but we call it, in California, we call it assault with a deadly weapon. And in two thousand seventeen, might've been eighteen, but I think it was two thousand seventeen, the Uniform Crime Reporting required us to throw in domestic violence, so it kinda went up a little bit in seventeen and eighteen. Um, so those statistics were joined with just the normal, you know, criminal assaults, uh, they, so they, they also now include domestic violence. Arrests, do you, there we go. Those numbers, um, again, the one at top, adult misdemeanor arrests, that's what we make the most of, the next one, the blue line, are adult felony arrests. And then below that, the two lines below are juvenile felony and juvenile misdemeanor arrests, the law changed in two thousand and nineteen again, and, you know, it's almost, almost useless to arrest a juvenile for anything these days, which is not to say we're not actively working cases or rec- or um, sending them to the district attorney for prosecution, but it generally does not include an arrest, it'll just be a complaint to the district attorney and then, well, they, they appear, appear in court later. The next stat is and this is kind of one I wanted to see, this is the, our Uniform Crime Report, our part one offenses in total, and then what it looks like compared to the state of California. So you can see the lines are kinda similar, um, as they flow up there, the um, California use them as, this is, I know, hard to read, but um, it's, the rate is per one hun- one hundred thousand inhabitants, we don't obviously have that, but that's what it looks like for us and our numbers. So this, you know, you take all of those Uniform Crime Reports that you saw on the first slide or on your, uh, what would be your second page, and you collect those up, and this is our, our trend line for all of those reportable offenses. And, you know, it's heading in the right direction, there's a spike in twenty twenty-one, a little bit, or moving up, not necessarily a spike, but, you know, generally, I like what I see. Um, I do wanna point out, some of this, some things that were previously felonies are now misdemeanors, they're, you know, things have been decriminalized in this state, and you can see that trend line moving down in California and, and most of us in law enforcement just ascribe it to the decriminalization of cer- certain crimes, so a lot of drug crimes, um, you know, the theft moved from it was four hundred dollars to nine hundred and fifty dollars, I believe was the, the threshold was four hundred, now it's nine fifty, so that accounts for some of that moving down. Next, we have um, our part one crimes, and how do we stack up with uh, the other communities in our county? So we're the very thick, kind of magenta colored line, and then the other communities that we have here and where they stack up, and I, I didn't, um, you know, I didn't get the large communities, Clovis and Fresno, cause it, we can't really relate to that, and quite frankly, we couldn't get a chart big enough for that, it wouldn't have, everything and the other, and the rural communities would have been squashed together, and we, you know, so we, we tried actually and it doesn't, doesn't look good. So what we have here are just the rural communities and something that we can, you know, really truly compare ourselves to. So as you can see, we're kind of in the middle of that, um, maybe the, the bottom third of that, and again, I'm you know, it's moving in the right direction, uh, obviously, we have some improvements to make, but, you know, the numbers are fairly low, and if you look at some other communities, they're uh, higher than us, um, the one, you see the big spike there, and I, I'm just gonna probably say that was a reporting issue, uh, or maybe a confusion on a reporting issue, I'm not really sure what that one is, but, yeah. Not necessarily for, for me to worry about on that one, but it is, is just very unusual. And next would be our calls for service, so this one uh, bears a little bit of explanation, you'll see in two thousand and fourteen and fifteen, it started dropping off quite a bit, a spike in, at the end of two thousand, or at, at the end of two thousand and fourteen. So, um, when Chief Besseger was our interim during this timeframe, he took a look at what we were reporting as a call for service, so to me, to Chief Besseger, a police call for service was when you call and you need an officer to respond. Uh, and so he started carving down some of this, he didn't do all of it, but he would take things like, if somebody wanted a life scan, he'd be like, that's not a call for service, that's just a, a service we provide, but it's not a police call for service necessarily. So he kinda knocked out some of that stuff, and then over two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen, I took a little more comprehensive look at it, and I knocked out some other things, you know, as an example, somebody would walk in, ask for a permit for their motor home for the week, we give those out all the time, but that's not a police call for service, that's just something that the um, office staff handles and as a matter of customer service for our citizens, so it's, um, I further refined his direction down to those types of things, and so what you're seeing from basically two thousand and seventeen on would, would, we would recognize and probably industry wide, we would recognize as a police call for service. Again, somebody needs an officer to handle a police matter for them, not just a routine administrative matter. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions on those, if you have any.
Council discussion?
No, it looks good. I mean, you know, the crime scene is low. That's the way we like it.
Indeed, sir, indeed.
I think it's a good perspective for people to understand the town, if, I know that on our comparison to the state of California, which we don't wanna ever compare to, that, that's per hundred thousand residents, but even if you multiply our population enough to qualify for that, our numbers still don't even show up on the state's chart. I think that is something that people should really look at, is our, our town wouldn't register even if we had that hundred thousand people, if we multiplied and folded over ourselves that many times, it still doesn't show up as even a blip on the radar, that, that's a, that's a, really a testament to the work that you guys are doing and we're thankful for that, chief, we're there.
Thank you, I appreciate the kind words.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item seven, council reports and staff communication, seven point one, Community Services Commission, we have not met. Seven point two, Public Safety Committee.
Uh, we've not met since our last meeting.
Seven point three, Chamber of Commerce.
Had the car show. Um, very successful, they had hundreds of people register for the car show, um, but I really wanna speak to how successful the cruise night was the night before that, it was amazing, uh, all of downtown was completely filled, uh, we went into some of the local restaurants and they were just completely filled with up to an hour wait, which was great, so, uh, overall, I think it was a great event, I know it was financially successful for the chamber, too, which is good to see.
Seven point four, Economic Development. Have not met. Seven point five, Finance Committee.
Have not met.
Seven point six, um, Planning Commission, I have a, I was not there, I was at League of Cities meeting with council member, um, Purcell, but I did watch the meeting in its entirety, and the conversation was centered around um, ADU and garage conversions and looking at our existing ordinances and looking at um, state requirements and starting the process of looking at what other cities are doing and updating ours, um, when that process does occur, and Holly's working on it right now by looking at other successful cities, they actually get a grade on the state um, website, like A through F on their plans, and she will look at the, the As and look at what they're doing and bring it back to Planning Commission, which will eventually involve us. Seven point seven, SKGSA. Jewel is not here.
She had a meeting, but I, I didn't get brief on it.
Alex, do you have?
I believe the board adopted the uh, development impact fees that we talked about, so um, I'll confirm that, and then eventually that will um, come back to council for consideration, uh, for adoption, for us to actually charge the fee for Sigma for new development, and it'd be, uh, uh, come under the umbrella of our impact fees that we charge currently.
Seven point eight, um, Downtown Business Improvement District. They haven't met.
Um, not since our last meeting, right? No.
Seven point nine, Council of Governments. We meet next week. Seven point ten, any council member reports?
Yeah, um, last Wednesday, Laura and I walked around District Five, sh- I showed her, you know, we, we had uh, Laura in here. That lives in my district, and I just showed Laura, our mayor, some of the areas that she, you know, she's concerned about, and um, and then I went to the car show, I didn't go, I didn't go to cruise night, I was busy that night, but I went to the car show with my grandson and walked around and saw some cars and it was nice, it was a lot of people and uh, a lot of nice cars, so it was good, like I said, it's good for the chamber to, good, they're putting on that, that's a good event for, for Kingsburg.
Um, I had um, a meeting with Moses Stites from the Fresno County Rural Transit Authority, uh, had him come down here to do a walk around through the downtown area to look at the microgrid system, where we could put that, and uh, there's some potential sites, uh, he was excited about a few of them, um, we met with some um, business owners and landowners in town, I followed up with Alex about some potential places, um, even our public parking as well, cause that would be for shaded parking as well as um, cha- electric charging stations, so it's, would be one charger per six stalls is how it would work out, so looking through the whole downtown area, so there's some potential spots for that. Um, and then, um, right after that, then Matthew Gillian from Inspiration Transportation came down, did the same walkthrough, he, he also has some charging stations that he could get us through grants, and so just kinda piggyback with that, cause he works a lot with FCRTA and COG as well, and so he did the walkthrough, uh, just to get an update where some of those things are, he's the one, I've mentioned before, that has got those really cool like flowers that bloom, and they'll move with the sun, they bloom in the morning, so we walked around and he's in the process of running some grants right now, so he just wanted to see visually, so we had those guys down, and then same thing car show, um, volunteered at the senior center breakfast, which I enjoy every year, and it was a good turnout, you know, considering same thing, you know, with the weather, it started to rain on us, but they quickly pivoted and went inside and they had great volunteers, and Adam did a really great job as well, and same with the seniors, seniors there, so that's, I know it's a big fundraiser for them every year, um, and then today, did a ride along with uh, fire department, and got to see a demo on the Lucas device, which is one of those chest compressions for CPR that does it itself, and that's kinda hardcore, but really exciting. Yeah, but it was, I mean, good to see, though, um, as well, um, and then I will not be at our next council meeting, the first one of the month, uh, my daughter's graduating from college, so I will be in Arizona for that.
Uh, Mayor North, I went to the League of California Cities uh, event last Thursday, I believe that was. Um, so it was a good event, I think it was really eye opening for me about a lot of the issues going on in Sacramento, and the things that are kinda happening behind the scenes, um, you know, for me, it was good education to learn that I think we really do need to engage at a higher level also, um, it's a good organization, I'm gonna try to go to as many of those things as I can to help support in fighting that big government that's trying to take away from us, uh, a lot of our control. I know, uh, Mayor Protam Palomar and I are planning on going to another event next month, um, just to see what we can do to help that fight.
To piggyback on that, um, they had so much good information on redistricting for our state, um, I really learned a lot, it was, it's a good organization for us to be participating in, Josh does a good job.
Good question, how, how was the food?
It was Harris Ranch, I've never, never heard anybody say that about that.
Seven point eleven, City Managers Report.
A couple of, uh, quick items, um, uh, tomorrow, uh, Jolene, uh, Economic Development Coordinator is gonna be down here with a videographer, uh, through the Fresno, um, EDC, they're doing a bunch of, um, they're working with all the small smi- cities and the counties to, you know, um, shoot sort of B-roll and showcase the, the, the communities, uh, especially for potential new businesses coming into town, so they're gonna be in the downtown, they've got, uh, some other locations, they're gonna go to the T-Mobile, obviously, they're gonna go to, um, Gus', they're gonna go to K Corporate Center, and so, um, they're gonna be in a lot of spots, so that's a, a positive thing, they'll, they'll be doing that tomorrow. Well, I'm sensitive to tell you this next one, cause we've been telling you this for several months, but uh, right now, the utility poles are scheduled to come out of the little Neovillas project next Friday, so um, I think Dave, Dave Peters mentioned to you the last time you talked about it, um, you know, eight, or PG&E taking care of their utilities, uh, AT&amp;T's taking care of theirs, Comcast, um, ran all their coax cable under, uh, to the apartments, so those are all operating, but um, that line, that aerial line there is their, uh, their, their fiber network, uh, and so they have to have a different crew come out to splice their fiber over before that they can take out the, the overhead line um, and, and take the, uh, take the poles out, and so, um, I impressed, uh, upon them that we have a grand opening coming up in May, and so, uh, right now, they're scheduled for next Friday, so fingers crossed on that, and then, um, I didn't get a chance during the, during the audit, but I, I did really wanna thank Alma, give her kudos to her, her and her staff, uh, we kinda joke with her that her life is cyclical, so she has about six months, six to eight months where she's working on the audit, and then as soon as that's done, we start working on the budget for the next year, so she's in the, the cycle for working on the upcoming budget right now, and as soon as that's over, we'll have her, we'll have her work on the next audit, so, so she does a good job, it's a, it really is a, a lot of work for, for a small staff, so.
Thank you, great job, Kim, absolutely.
That's all I have.
Thank you, item eight, under Future Agenda Items, we have none listed. Item nine, the city, Kingsburg City Council is going to adjourn out of regular calendar into closed session for nine point one, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. Nine point two, conference with real property negotiators, California Government Code Section five four nine five six point eight. Nine point three, conference with real property negotiators and the same California Government Code, so we will adjourn out into closed session.